You're done.
Okay, okay, open the meeting then for her. I move that we approve the minutes for May 19, 2022.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. I guess we gotta go through the continued.
Yep.
Okay, long built homes?
Okay. I move that we continue the hearing until 7:21.
She requested it.
At their request.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Comprehensive conservation subdivision.
Joshua's here.
I'm here on another matter. I think we requested that continuance previously to another date.
Yeah.
Okay, until, okay, yeah.
July 21st.
Make a motion, Jim.
Okay, I move that at the request of the applicant, we continue the hearing to July 21st.
All in favor?
No, you're gonna need a second.
I'll second, yes, absolutely.
But he did. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Reed Brothers. Same thing, Jim.
Okay, at the applicant's request, I move that we continue the hearing to July 21st.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
For the record, go ahead. Anyone opposed now? There is a site visit next Thursday with DEP for their water quality certificate, so if anybody wants to go, it's next Thursday morning. I can send you the time.
Okay. I'll do that and I'll.
I think I invited you already, but I'll invite you again.
Okay, well, after a while this gets, I get so many, I don't have a secretary, personal secretary.
I understand. Your wife doesn't do that, huh?
No.
Ross, Ross Bosesselli, 170 Beach Street.
My husband definitely doesn't do it.
Good evening, Bob Baravy, Pro Land Engineering, representing Ross Bosesselli, who's in the audience. Since our last meeting, there were some comments that we received from Board of Health, Todd Pillings. So we addressed those comments, and I think this board's position was they wanted to make sure the Board of Health was satisfied before they closed out the conservation end of it. So that's, I believe that's where we stand at this point.
These are the plans that you wanted to work. Will you just tell them what's changed?
Yep. Yep. Okay, Todd had a couple of comments. First comment, he wanted me to identify the sand that we found on site. He wanted that listed as uncompacted, which it was, so we put that on there. Most sand that we run into, which is medium grade on this case, is already uncompacted, but we identified that on the soil log and on that plan. He said that because it's a two-bedroom dwelling, we had designed it for a two-bedroom dwelling with a two-bedroom deed restriction. He said Title V would allow the applicant to increase the size of the septic system to three bedrooms with a three-bedroom deed restriction instead of a two. So I ran that by Ross, and Ross, it's a little bit more expensive, same tank, same pump chamber, but the field is a little larger. He decided that he would pay the extra to have a larger system put in, so I changed it from a two to a three bedroom. He asked me about the height of the wall. Ross is proposing to put a wall between his property and the abutting property to the north. At the time, he was thinking about some rocks, that he was thinking about putting in a little block wall. He really just wanted to delineate his property from the neighbor, and Ross decided that he would make the wall probably one to two feet in height, just to give him a little bit of a physical barrier between the two properties. So I put that on the plan too, on the notes.
Yeah, Bob.
Yes.
He's increased his septic system from two bedrooms to three.
Yes.
I'm looking at the tank, right?
Yep.
Okay, where's the leach field?
The.
That's the field.
That's the field?
Yeah, this is the tank.
Okay, that's all right.
It's kind of like a crawl space under the dwelling.
Okay, the tank stays the same size, the leach field gets bigger?
Yes, yeah, the tank is here, and then it goes into a thousand gallon pump chamber, which is the same size, same pumps. The field is a little bit larger.
Okay, all right.
Happens with the septic pool, it gets filled in?
Yes. Yeah, that'll get pumped down, dry, and then it'll be filled in. If it gets in the way of anything they're doing, then they could remove it. But if it's concrete, so the law would allow them to pump it dry and fill it. They usually collapse the top in so that there's no voids in there. Fill it.
Wow, okay.
He also asked about the garage, asked if the owner would like to raise the garage, because as part of this filing, he's got a small garage in the back corner of the property, but it's in poor shape, so he wanted to take that down and then eventually build the same-sized garage, pretty much in the same location. Todd asked if we could turn it a little more parallel with the property lines, which we don't have an issue doing, so I took the minimum setbacks on the garage that's existing now, then rotated the garage parallel with the lines, and then kept it further away than what's existing now from the abutters. He also asked about raising it, figured that maybe we should raise it a little bit, because this area, like this particular lot, especially with the activity that's took place on the abutting piece of property, this lot is kind of a bowl. So you can see the grade, I took some grade shots on the road that goes on the two sides. It's higher than most of these pieces of property. So during a flood, heavy rains, it does occasionally get some water sitting in there before it eventually perks down into the ground. So again, Ross said that, yeah, he could raise it, it wouldn't be a problem on his end, so we put a note in there that he raised the grade of the finished floor of the garage by about a foot, just so it would stay dry. He asked me to put two dimensions on the septic system, the leaching field from the property line to the leaching field itself, so I did. That's on the plan. He asked me to give him some spot grades on the roadway, so I put spot grades going down Beach Street at the edge of road, which we shot when we did the topo, and then going up Park Ave. I also put some in the property itself. The contours that are there, you can see the existing contours. They're at one-foot intervals, but I also added some spot grades, just to show what's existing out there. And then at the last thing he asked, it was contours across the street, nothing to do with our property, but he asked us to shoot the elevation of an existing septic system across the street, just to see how it would look relative to what we're proposing. So we did shoot that when we did our fieldwork initially, and put a couple of grade elevations on there, so you could see what those elevations are. It's higher than our lot. At one time, one of the abutters came to a meeting, they were just concerned we weren't gonna, by the activities taking place on this lot, we're gonna flood their property. But you can see by those grades, their property is a lot higher than our property, and eventually by the road contours, you'll see the water will pitch out over the road if it ever fills up, or if there's a flood coming from the Tottenham River, it would recede back towards the Tottenham River, not go towards the abutters property. And I think Todd has reviewed it, and said that he was all set, and I think he issued the permit to install the septic system based on closing out the conservation work.
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
The driveway is either gonna be gravel or asphalt, do you know yet?
Not asphalt.
Okay, great.
At least at this time, he talked about, he just wants to go gravel.
Great, we like it. I like it. And then the row of shrubs, I'm gonna specify those in your order, assuming they approve it, so. I was just thinking some low native shrubs, unless you wanted tall ones. Do you care?
There are shrubs, not trees, that?
It says treesy and shrubs, okay, so I think I'll mix it up a little bit then. You just have twelve?
It's a couple on the other side of the garage, going down the side here.
There's some existing.
Maybe there's just eleven, one, two, three, four.
Did you space them out, or you can specify it?
It would depend on what the plan and how many there are.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, so it would just be native, like a couple of species.
Like swamp maple, we never probably.
Do you want a tree that large?
Yeah, but I think they'd be fine.
Okay.
I mean, the purpose is probably motion control, right? I think like on the purposes part.
It's one of them, yeah, and flood control, and I mean, you know, the more, obviously the more trees you have in, the more they're gonna absorb the water and help mitigate some of those issues, but.
I mean, I think they would do the best there.
Sure, yeah. I mean, they don't all have to be trees. It can be like a mix. But we can talk about it and figure it out, so that I'm not writing something in your order that you don't
Yeah, that's fine.
you don't wanna spend that much money, as long as there are eleven, and they're all native, and a mix of trees and shrubs. All right, sounds good.
Okay, Bob, add the asphalt driveway, the asphalt.
Yeah, you can cross that out.
Okay. So Lisa, that'll be, it'll be recorded, that'll be gravel. Charlie?
So the flood compensation wasn't necessary, or am I missing it?
Compensatory storage isn't required.
For coastal.
For coastal.
Got it.
Yeah, if we, in some situations where we can do that, but since this entire piece of property is below the coastal flood elevation, it kind of becomes a moot point, because the boat would come up to that level, there's nowhere on sight we could dig a hole.
Yeah.
That would take that into account.
You gotta keep a boat inside.
He's got one out there.
Jim? I have no other questions.
I got a question. Bob, have the waivers been granted for the septic?
It was part of the approval, and he did grant, he like approved it based on those waivers.
And we could require a restriction on for the three-bedroom restriction?
Yeah.
That could be part of our order of conditions.
Yeah, I guess it might be something that Lisa could take up with Todd or whatever. I don't know how you do that, because we designed it as two, and then he was the one that suggested a three, he says, because someday he might wanna go up and put another bedroom in. He says that would give him the opportunity to do that. So that system, as it's sized now, would accommodate three bedrooms. At this point, Ross doesn't have any intentions. He's trying to put enough into the property to live there, but he doesn't wanna like gold plate this thing. He's got a limited amount of money to put into it. That's why he's trying to keep everything to a minimum.
But it is a two-bedroom.
It's a two-bedroom house, yeah.
I don't have a problem.
And just for the record, this is DEP file number 017-0449, in case anyone was wondering.
I'll move then that we accept the design and issue and order of conditions.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
David Burdo.
David Burdo, 2396 Pleasant Street, has requested a continuance as well. They're working on some things.
Okay. I move that at the request of the applicant, the hearing be continued to 7:21.
Yep.
Second that.
Motion, Jim.
This is the continuance? Yeah, Charlie seconded.
I seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Both. Motion carries. Oh, boy. Pure Oasis. Harrius.
Yeah.
I saw him yesterday. Hanging around the same building.
Lisa, did you know he's gonna dress in black tonight?
No. It's
I wasn't yesterday, so.
It's not, it's not the Celtics funeral, I promise.
Yeah, I hope not.
That's fair enough.
All right, so how's it going, everyone? I'm Sean Berry from Level Design Group, here on behalf of the applicant. Just wanted to touch on a few really quick changes. Yesterday, Dan Campbell from Level Design Group and myself were at the Stormwater Committee meeting, and we got conditional approval for the plans. The main condition being that we answer Todd Pillings' comment letter dated May 18th, and get stamped plans in. We answered those today, so this current plan is revised June 16th, and there were very minor changes. The first change being the rain garden along Warner Boulevard. This is a little shallower and a little wider. We talked about scoping the CDS inlet units, and that video would be provided or there would be witnessed by the building inspector or Todd. We added additional snow storage area in the corner of the gravel parking lot, and we extended the erosion control from this area down along the gravel parking area on the Warner Boulevard side. Those were the only changes we've made that satisfy Todd's letter. So at this point, I've asked if we could close this out and have a few conditions of approval to match the Stormwater Committee's approval plan, and that I get you guys this stamped 616 set. We just haven't had time to stamp that yet, since I just finished these today, so.
Okay, so you're asking for conditional approval based upon the stormwater reaction or actions?
Correct.
That's what I remember yesterday.
Okay. Okay, I don't have any questions on the project itself.
Okay.
Nor I.
Audience?
I don't have any questions on the project. I heard them all yesterday.
Okay, but the audience might have questions.
Okay.
I doubt it.
Okay, then.
He's, this fellow right there is pretty close to that.
I have no comment or questions.
Okay, okay. Okay, I move that we issue a conditional.
I want to issue an order with conditions.
An order of conditions with conditions.
They should have conditions if it's an order of conditions.
It's a conditional approval, so we're gonna approve it based on Todd and Jim's review being satisfactory. And if it's not, then it's not approved.
Okay, I move that we give conditional improvement to this project based upon stormwater approval. I guess that's it.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
I gather you didn't, you didn't solve all your problems with the Stormwater Commission?
We solved all the problems, we just need to get them stamped plans.
Some what?
We just need to get them some stamped plans of this revised.
And they need time to review it.
Yeah.
So once they have time to review it.
Okay, moving right along, we have a new hearing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
David and Amy Towers, trouble ours. Oh, Bob's got another one here.
Sean Townhouse closed on Monday.
Okay. I'll get, I'll get some stuff over Tuesday.
Bob, 3093 Elm.
It's across, you know where Jeff Simons lives?
Yeah.
Right across, pretty much right across the street, and then maybe a little north about, it's one of the lots that he bought when he created those lots for all his friends. One of those. It's not the one all the way up near the farm animals and the cemetery. It's the second one back from that. I think Adam's house is across the street.
Well, okay, I know, I know where, I know where it is.
Yeah.
I'll give you guys some plans.
Okay, thank you.
Carry on, Bob, please.
How about waiting a moment till we get the plans, so we can follow through?
Sure.
Gonna give them to her.
Actually, Bob, it was second, we have one plan.
I got one there, yeah.
Okay. Yes, I think given yours.
We got another one of them, Lisa.
Seen that before.
Bob's gonna give it to you.
Oh, I got, I got that already too. Did you see this?
Did you see?
I got it here even.
Cut off Jim. Yep, it's right on the ball. School creatures, don't throw anything away.
This is the proposal, which actually.
Yeah, the house, as he has already approved.
Thank you.
It's in the fifty-foot no structure, no.
Well, it's
It's in a buffer zone.
It's in the buffer zone, but you know it's gonna wipe out here, so we were looking at it to relocate here, so that it's, it gets a greater buffer zone.
They agree we can do that here?
No, 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 that's me drawing, that's my drawing.
They did receive a file number. It's DEP file number 017-0410.
Slow down.
0410.
Okay. Okay.
Okay, all set. This project, the all of the land was purchased by Jeff Simons, probably in 2010. The entire piece of property, both sides of Elm Street, and then across County Street towards Muddy Cove, was flagged by Ecosystem Solutions, Brandon Fanniff flagged everything. Many flaglines out there.
When did he flag it?
That was in 2010. And then relocated them. And I think, I could be wrong, but I think Lenore White may have been the consultant that reviewed his flagline. Yeah, since then, all, pretty much all the lots, there's one remaining that's a relative of his owns that land, and he owns one more piece of property on County Street, which is going through the pyramid process, but the other five or six houses on these lots have been constructed, including this one. So this one's identified as 3093 Elm Street. The house is in, the septic system is in the front yard, where you can see it on my plan. The existing well is also in the front yard, more than a hundred feet away from the septic system. The driveway winds in, pretty much starting in the center of the property, winds in by the well, takes another turn, and then comes in to his front entrance garage. What he's proposing to do is to put a detached 31-foot by 41-foot garage on his property, and he wants it located, so he put it like right on the edge of the existing driveway that's there now. Brandon went out, I think he sent a letter to the board, he went out probably about six or seven months ago, maybe a little bit longer, but it was definitely within the last year, and re-reviewed his flagline to make sure that the line he installed 12 years ago was still a good line. And based on his findings, that was his conclusion. Did you see that letter, Lisa?
I did.
So then based on that, we had already located all the lines with survey equipment. We established the property lines because we did the Form A plan out here. So that represents where everything sits out there. So I'm showing from the wetland line, which is actually now on the abutters property, to 25-foot no-touch zone, and then the 50-foot nostructure zone. Because of the size of this garage, and he wanted it on the edge of the driveway where it's located, I pushed it almost right up to the 50-foot nostructure zone. So it's like 51 feet away at the closest point. And that's where it sits, so that's what he's proposing to do.
That's a pretty big garage. Is this for, is this for his, his own private vehicles?
Yeah, he's got, he's got his own vehicles that go in it. He's actually got another garage at the house that he keeps his family cars in, but I don't know if he has trucks. He's not proposing to run a business out of there, but all these guys seem to have toys, whether boats, or campers, or automobiles. So I think that's what he's doing, is he's, this is gonna be like the place where he goes.
Okay, Bob, I'm, I'm concerned about it being right at, right at the edge of the zone, when there is so much room on this property. And I mean so much, the garage could be moved over considerably and still be part of the driveway system, leaving access to the existing dwelling with it, was it a two-car garage now?
Yeah, it's a two-car garage.
And it would, it would, it would give another 50 feet or so buffer zone. I mean, the room is there. This is a huge lot. And I say to come that close, because you know that that work is going to go way in into the zone, in, into the buffer zone.
It's in the buffer zone, you mean the.
Well, it is, but it's even gonna go deeper into the, towards the wetland. Well, it is, but it's even gonna go deeper into the, in, towards the wetland. I've, I've just sketched out something here on my paper, if you wanna take a look at it. That I think would be much more suitable to us, or to me. I'm not, I can't talk for them. I hear you got access to this driveway and, and that would give another sixty foot in the buffer zone. You know, you're still in the, in the hundred-foot buffer zone, but it would be another little bit further. You could have your access here, because your driveway comes in over here anyway. So, you would have access this way and you would still have access to here.
Well, I can run it by him, he's not here tonight. But I can run it by him, because I think he wanted to keep it away from the house. I don't think he wanted it that close, otherwise I think he would have attached it.
Then he can put it over here.
I mean, a fifty-foot no structure zone is a fifty-foot no structure zone. If you buy, take the fifty-foot no structure zone and then tell him that you want to put it seventy-five or eighty feet away.
Well, I'm saying you got the room. I mean, it's not, it's not like.
Performance standards require, you know, avoidance first.
Okay.
Is this his property, gentleman sitting over there?
No.
No.
And I haven't been there yet.
Why would he, we make a move anywhere else? It's within the fifty-foot note, could building zone, our, by law.
Well, because.
Doesn't make any sense.
The performance standards say you need to avoid.
The guy should be able to put it anywhere on this property that he wants, as long as he's doing it legally. Our fifty-foot no-touch zone doesn't say where it has to be put. It just says it has to be within the fifty-foot no-touch zone. It's his property.
You mean outside of it?
He wants it there.
Outside of it.
Why would we object?
I don't think he's trying to object, he's just trying to get him to minimize the impacts. I haven't been to the site yet, so, Bob, maybe you can meet me out there.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, just, just give me a shout whenever you want.
Is it staked out?
I don't think so.
Okay.
But we can. But I'll, I'll put the stakes in there. The rest of it, like on the other side of the driveway is, is heavily wooded, you know, so you're about to leave.
Yeah, that's funny, because Brandon's report said it's primarily grass.
Not in this area.
Yeah.
Yeah, there, at least there were when we were out there.
Okay. I'll take a look at it.
All right, yeah, just give me a shout. So.
But yeah, I mean, even if you say he doesn't want to put it in the place that Jim suggested.
Yeah, I'll take it, I mean, I'll take it, I'll let him know, you know, if he can move it. I just, I don't, that's where he told us he wanted to put it, so that's why we put it there.
Yeah.
He, but without him here, I can't speak for him. But we'll stake it out, that way you can see it. And at the same time, we'll talk to him about the concerns and see.
Just stake out the closest two corners.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, so we'll continue, we're filling out form.
Yep. Jim, do you wanna take a walk out there with me, do you do that somewhere? There you go. Thank you, appreciate it.
So, that's it for tonight, we kind of agreed. He probably has his reasons why he wanted to go to the fifty-one, just to keep it there. But without him here, we'll pick up a crowd and.
Well, that was just, you know, a thought to minimize the buffer zone intrusion. Not to say that.
Oh, yeah.
It can't be done there.
Oh, yeah, I know.
But, well, that's sort of our job.
Yeah, I agree. Yeah, we'll, we'll go look at the whole site and.
Okay.
Back to you.
Okay, at applicant's request, we'll continue the hearing and, or. You have a question?
I'll have a question for him after, whatever you were gonna say.
No, go ahead. I'll make the motion afterwards to continue.
A what?
I'll make the motion to continue afterwards.
Did you have any problems paying for the ad?
I don't think so, but I don't do what Kim does. Was there any issues with it?
She didn't say, but she might have some, and if she has some, tell her to get in touch with us, because.
Okay, we did one Swansea and we were waiting forever to get a file number from the state. It wasn't, you took the ads to the state of the newspaper.
Newspaper, there's a new billing department, procedure.
I'll check with Kim tomorrow and see.
Well, I see you got it, so apparently there was no problem.
Yeah, still time to get one, so.
I move that we continue the hearing until July twenty-first.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Thank you, I'll be in touch.
All in favor?
Aye.
Yes, aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. DI Trust Property on Forest Street, that's gotta be you.
Bill, finish reading what the item is, please.
What was that, Lisa?
Can you finish reading what the item is, so there's no confusion?
To discuss and vote to approve a request to extend an order of resource area delineation with file number SC seven oh seventeen oh four one nine. From DI Trust, the property on Forest Street. Assesses map three, lot twenty-eight, thirty-three, and seventy-eight. For three years until six twenty-five twenty-five.
Go ahead, you're here.
So, so members of the commission, I'd reached out to Lisa, we'd spoken on this. This extension request is actually, has been converted to a request to confirm the tolling of the permit. As a result of the COVID pandemic, orders and laws were passed tolling certain permits, and this is one that qualifies. Lisa and I discussed it and I confirmed the dates with her. Under the applicable laws, rules, and regulations, the original date of June twenty-six, two thousand and twenty-two was told four hundred and sixty-two days. To October first, two thousand and twenty-three. As a result of the tolling, the extension request is essentially moot. And therefore, just came this evening to answer any questions you might have regarding the tolling of the permit, given our prior correspondence.
COVID made everything a little more confusing than it had to be.
And not to speak for Lisa, but I think she concurs with most of what I just said, if not all.
Yeah, so it's, it's already continued, he didn't have to request the continuance. And until we actually looked at the dates and everything, we realized it's already continued. And what's the date it's continued to again?
October first, two thousand and twenty-three.
Yeah. So, he just wants you to approve, agree that it meets the tolling requirements. There's an email, I may have sent it out to everybody, from Josh, and I agreed with it. Let me know if you want it, I'll send it to you.
Do you need a motion?
Yeah.
Okay, I make a motion that we accept the COVID regulations, which have already continued this. Re, order of resource area delineation to October one, two thousand and twenty-three.
Thank you.
Is there a second?
I'll second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Applause in the evening.
Next, I'd like to discuss and vote to approve lifting an enforcement order, twenty-three seventy-two Park Street.
Okay, Lisa, you want just to talk about that for me?
Sure, yeah, so at our last meeting, we approved this one. This was an after-the-fact permit, and we issued the order of conditions on June first. This is DEP file number zero one seven, seven dash zero four five eight. But at the hearing, the consultant forgot to request that we lift the enforcement order. So, that's why it's on this agenda. They have received it and they have recorded it and they have not started work yet. But they're in the process of fixing their erosion controls. They actually have started work, because it's after the fact, but they haven't started new work.
Okay. I move that we lift the enforcement order issued to twenty-three seventy-two Park Street.
Second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thanks.
Motion carries.
I'll email the consultant.
Oh, wait a minute. We have a bill from the Registry of Deeds. A hundred and six dollars.
It's actually billed from the town.
Had a land, two parcels of land donated by Otis Dyer's estate. Betsy Dyer. Did all the legwork and she had her lawyer make up the deeds. She, she brought the deeds to the. Registry of Deeds, and I don't think you can hand them there without paying, you're gonna.
It was.
I think when Betsy recorded them, I think she had to pay.
Okay, this was, let's see, Lisa from the assessors office sent me an email, so let me pull that up. There's a lien. Okay.
I can't read your lips when you do that.
I have attached a copy of the lien released for map ten, lot twenty-three, Dyer's property on Horton Street. As you know, this property was granted to the town of Dayton on October twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty-two. Along with another parcel located on Wellington Street.
On what, was it Second Street?
Huh?
Wellington.
Wellington, okay.
Two pieces, one on Horton, one on Wellington.
Yep, of which was not classified under chapter land. The chapter sixty-one B lien on the Horton Street property has not been released. In order to do that, a check in the amount of one hundred and six dollars should be sent to our office. Payable to the Northern Bristol County Registry of Deeds at your earliest convenience. Please feel free to reach out to me if you have any questions. Respectfully, Lisa Tetral.
All right, this is just releasing them from sixty-one. Okay, I thought it was recording a fee, I know she would pay that. But it goes without saying that it would be okay if we paid one hundred and six dollars for sixteen acres of land on Horton Street. I'm listening to you guys.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we. Pay one hundred and six dollars to the Bristol County Registry of Deeds. To release a lien on two parcels of land donated by the Otis Dyer Estate.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Okay, Charlie. We'll pay it. Discuss and vote to approve the graphic signs that ought to be used by applicants. For the wetland protection law, twenty-five foot, undisturbed vegetation. The commission will determine the number and placement of the signs in the approved plan. Did you guys, Lisa sent everybody pictures of this?
Yes. Do you, I have them right here too.
I kinda like the one Rehoboth using that you didn't show us. That I sent you.
Well, I couldn't print that.
Huh?
I can't print that.
Why?
Cause it's in a text.
Or can we see the, it's.
She can pretty much do anything you wanna do.
Yeah, the, most of the stuff that she sent us had birds and stuff like that.
Well, but the one in Rehoboth, all it has is cattails.
That's a big sign.
No, it's.
Oh, looks big.
Well, she, she can just do the round one with a cat tail, if that's what you guys decide, you know?
Yeah, that, that could be any wetlands, uh, cause the birds, when we talked, birds would be good down the river, but not good for inland and. But the, 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 cattails are, are the most recognized wetland plants in, in, I guess, in the country. So, if you.
Or fragmities.
No.
That's what Rehoboth has. What town has that?
Shoppin' Cats.
Rehoboth.
I'm sure she has one.
Who?
She's got everything. The lady that, um, Marion, is it? The lady that does the Adrian design.
Did you see Billy's?
Yeah.
I mean, I'm, I'm good with that, with that design or.
Let me see, I sent an email out with some additional ones, did you see that?
Yeah, we, you sent those a bunch of them.
Same company sell those signs?
Did, wait, would you send this email or as a text?
Email.
I don't remember seeing them.
So, she basically said I have all these countless examples. Give me an idea of what you, what you want, you want wetlands, I'm attaching a few. And she attached a few, let me just pull them up.
Yeah, if, if, if it's to be a, a sign that'll designate wetland boundaries, the picture order, I think the picture should.
We don't want salamanders, look.
I don't think you need salamanders up there.
What's that, marijuana leaves?
Yeah.
Is it chestnut?
Well, they shouldn't be here, not yet, in a few years maybe.
You're gonna grow marijuana soon?
You gotta do the disturbance sign right there, the red one.
Yeah. So, you guys just have to make a decision tonight, not to put pressure on, but we have to spend the money quick, cause it's the end of the.
That fits our requirements.
You don't have to do rad, you can do whatever color you want.
There is one right here, it's cannonine tails.
Yeah.
Where's that from?
Upland Charles Land Trust Boundaries.
But she can change the writing.
Oh, yeah. This, I'm looking at this one here, it has birds, it has cattails, it has.
And the green's a little more aesthetically pleasing, unless you want blue or white.
No, green and white, I think, would be. Doesn't make any difference to me.
No, that, that's fine, and actually, we'd only have to get one, one style.
This one?
Well, I'll, I'm not going to, you guys, that just caught my eye, with the bird and the, and the.
Yeah, there's cattails in there, right?
I don't know if that cat tails are fragmities. Ah, they're cattails.
I love this iPad, let me tell you.
You love what?
My iPad.
I got the same thing.
Okay, come on. Okay, come on, let's move along.
Okay, well, we gotta vote to, on money for this.
Did we tell Lisa that's the one we're going to go with?
Lisa?
Do you want the bird or no bird?
Well, that one's fine.
Yeah, the bird is fine, yeah.
All right, the Charles Land Trust.
Black bird on cattails, that's...
So, okay, they're a buck twenty each plus shipping. If we were to get... Well, what do you think, Lisa? We were talking before about, earlier, before Bill came in, Charlie and I were talking about how many. And we were using those two, the ones with the tree and the ones with the bird. But, but we're not gonna, we're gonna go with that one and get all the same.
Do you, yeah, do you think we should do all the same ones for like? I was thinking, let's think ahead because we have extra money. So we could do a different one for the town conservation land. Or you could just do all of them like this and then some of them will say...
Well, don't confuse everybody. Let's do the same, do the same sign all over.
Right, but the same sign means our conservation land has the same sign as someone's private land that we say is 25-foot no touch.
Okay, well, we could just put down Dayton Conservation Property or something like that on it.
Yeah, I like the one SeaCon has, which is the wording, protected wetland area. SeaCon Conservation Commission. I think we should just keep it simple.
Well, we could do that with the, the other design.
Yeah.
And have the same design, but a little bit...
Different wording.
Different wording.
Okay, what's the wording gonna be?
Just like that one, you just showed us.
This wording for the 25-foot no-touch signs. I don't want to order the wrong thing here. And it's gonna be green and white, right?
Yeah.
With the cattail photo.
Yep.
And how many do we want?
Two fifty.
How many?
Two hundred and fifty.
Oh.
We need thousands, Bill.
We have a lot of money. Two fifty's gonna be one of the big subdivisions and they'll be wiped out.
We need to go on the thousands.
Think big.
No, 25, I, tell us how many we need and that's what we should get.
Okay. What did we say we were gonna get? We said, there's a...
Lisa, you can't just hang them in the air. You need stakes also.
We're not buying those. The applicant has to buy their own four by four or whatever.
No, two by four, or two by two. Pressurized it.
Yeah, pressurized in the ground.
Okay, well, we'll figure that part out later.
All right, get the sign.
Let's order, I don't know, 4,000 pieces would be...
Total or 4,000 of one and two of another?
4,000 pieces would be 4,800 for...
Plus shipping.
Yeah.
So that's gonna be up, so that's gonna, it could be as much as a little over 5,000.
That's just for this one.
The same wording?
This is just for this...
The strip zone is gonna have the same wording.
That's what I want to know.
It should be different wording.
I think it should be different.
Yeah.
But we'll get 4,000 of these with the cattail for the 25-foot no-touch. But then what are we getting for the Conservation Commission land? The same exact Charles photo?
With different saying.
And we want it to say this?
Protected, yeah, protected conservation area. Then put down Dayton Conservation.
Minus, yeah.
And what, 2,000 of those?
With the cattail and the bird, the black bird.
We'd actually need more of those than we do of the latter, the first ones. We don't have that many protected areas. 4,000, we don't have 4,000 protected areas.
We control all of, almost all of Broad Cove thanks to Bill.
We'll put one every 50 feet?
I don't think we need to put them very close. But yeah, maybe every 100 feet or something, so we'll order less.
Yeah, less. I mean, I was just playing around before. Now, you said 4,000 for the ones that they're gonna buy and, what, 2,000, 1,000 of the others? Of our land.
We need more for protected buffer zone than we do for the lands that we own.
Yeah.
Yes, yes, I agree.
Because that's gonna go on in perpetuity.
We got land all over the place too now. We got, we got land behind...
We still don't have 4,000 parcels. We don't have 2,000 parcels. We don't have 200 parcels.
But it's growing.
It can't grow that fast, Dayton's not that big. We should have more of the 25-foot no-touch than we have of the others, a lot more.
Okay, well...
So we do 1,000 of the others. We might as well, because if we, you don't want to go less than 1,000 because the prices jumped that much.
Yeah, we'll do 1,000 of the others. We can always order more, but then let's do 5,000 of the other ones. Because we have more money. Yeah, 5,000 of the others to that, because that'll bring it to 1,200.
Around 70, around 7200.
6,000 for that, for the 25-foot no-touch plus shipping. And then let's do 2,000 of these. 5,000 of those and 2,000 of these?
That's 8,400 without, without...
Without shipping.
Without shipping.
Jesus, we ought to get free shipping when we're buying that, my dad and mom.
I'll go pick it up, you'll save some money.
Where are they making?
Anyway, well, we're just hashing around here about signs. I want to know what these two people are doing here.
Oh, I'm here for the Zero Horton Street Encoursement Order Restoration Plan.
Yeah, he's here for Wilton Ribeiro, the Paveo's old lot.
Okay, all right.
It's coming next.
Yeah, yes, do, let's, let's take him one...
Okay, no, no, let's finish, I think we're all set here with this.
Yeah, we're all set with that.
Okay, now, how much did it come up to? Was it, am I right, 8,400 or...
Let me do the math. Keep going, I'll do the math while you're doing it.
It's seven times, 7,000 times 120, so that's 7,000, that's $8,400.
Yeah, I think you're right.
Plus postage. So, okay, so if I make a motion then to pay up to, but up to $9,000 for, well, that's, we're gonna have money, we won't spend it all.
Okay.
But we don't know what postage is gonna be.
And we don't know what the posts are gonna cost.
No, we're not buying posts.
What are you gonna stick them on?
Um, well...
They're gonna be required to buy their own.
Not, not on the conservation...
Oh, you're talking about us?
The conservation land, we gotta do it.
We can put it on trees.
We'll work with Tom Ferry on that, I'm sure. He'll come up with something for it. Anyway, let's get, let's get these, let's get these.
Okay, let's finish, we're almost done with this here, let's finish this. Okay.
Well, hang it like ornaments.
That we purchase conservation signs as directed, not to exceed $9,000.
I'll check it out.
All right.
All in favor?
Aye.
That gives a little wiggle room.
Okay.
Thank you, guys.
Okay, that's done.
Tell us what you got, what you're doing. I don't see you on the agenda here.
Bill, Bill's a big Celtics fan. I know, we gotta hurry up.
Good evening, my name is Ryan Rosin. I'm with Goddard Consulting here on behalf of the applicant. So I think my colleague Tom Shuts was here in prior meetings and had conversations with Lisa. So this is a plan for the buffer zone restoration planting plan. I don't know if you guys have, I can just, if you guys want to look at this.
Yeah.
You said your first name's Ryan?
Ryan, Ryan Rosin. Yeah, so within the 25-foot, there was some disturbance there as you are aware and the enforcement order was issued. And so we're doing plantings.
We need a street here in a location on the...
Well, this is, this is in the back of the property. So the street is kind of way, way down here. So this is just a zoomed-in area of the disturbance within the 25-foot no-disturb zone.
This is Horton Street. This is right on the front of Horton Street, it's not in the back.
It's not, okay. I haven't been there, I, I thought it was the back. Or there's, there's something else in the back too.
Something else that they want to get to in the back. So that's, so this is Paveo's lot. You guys are very familiar with this.
No, no, but what I, why is it only the 25-foot zone? He ripped up so much in the, in the whole buffer zone.
Well, he's, yeah, he's talking about only planting in the 25-foot no-touch.
And I think there's, there's plans in the future after this is done to either do more work or to restore more area. But right now, we're just seeking approval to get the 25-foot zone reestablished with native plants as soon as possible.
You guys certainly don't have to approve this as tonight. You can just digest it a little bit and have them come back next time. I had them make a number of changes. So my concerns, just so everybody knows, was to add approximate to the plan where it says...
Why don't we have the information that you have in your hand? Why don't we have that?
I forward every, I forward it to you guys. I forward everything to you guys in the email.
Would you, I have, I have one copy of, this is the restoration plan. It shows step-by-step of how we do it. And what Lisa's talking about up here where we need to note the weapon line is approximate, not the entire location, that's what one's concerned about. Feel free to look through that, that's the step-by-step of how we plan to restore the 25-foot zone.
You know, I'm just wondering why it's in piecemeal, only the 25-foot and, and then he's gonna bail out and not do anything else.
Yeah, we probably should get the whole buffer zone planted. I asked them to address the ruts, which they did in the letter. I asked them to address the piles of debris.
So this is this one here?
They somewhat did. Asked them to remove the concrete in the buffer zone.
The yellow is buffer zone?
Yeah.
Yes.
The orange is no-touch zone?
Yeah. They're trying to do, quite frank, my opinion, or if you want to hear it, they're trying to do the minimum to get out of the enforcement order so that they can move forward with trying to perk. But there's no area to perk without filing an ANRAD because they, there's not 100 feet in the front. They don't have the area to perk in the front. What they're gonna try to do is go to the back. And in order to get to the back, they're gonna need an ANRAD filing. So they're gonna have to get through this area where they...
And then to cross the stream, they're gonna need Army Corps of Engineers and...
They're gonna need to file, well, in order to do a perk, we have to obviously have them file.
So, yeah, so our, our plan would be file an ANRAD once we're able to restore the 25-foot. And then after that, if everything works out with the ANRAD, we get an ORAD, we do the perk stuff and they decide to move forward with any building or anything like that, then we go before you again with a notice of intent with full...
And then you're gonna go plow right through that no-touch zone again?
Well, they're gonna have to, to perk. And so, you know, that's where it gets to me. It's in an ORW, outstanding resource water, as we know, like the one up the street.
Yeah.
You know, and there's a stream there. It's a little complicated, but I want to at least get the front restored before...
So the whole, even the yellow area to be restored?
Yeah, I mean, you're right. You guys can certainly require that.
Can we make a decision on anything on this project if it's not on the agenda?
It is on the agenda.
Huh?
It is.
Where?
Under my...
Under Commission Agent Updates and Discussion Section?
Yeah.
This is the first item below that.
Okay.
Towards the bottom of the page.
I didn't go that far down, I guess I should have.
Well, we skipped an item, but we'll go back to that item at the end, I guess.
Okay. My apologies.
No worries.
But you guys certainly can digest this. I'm not gonna let them plant in the dead of summer anyway. Planting time is either in the spring or the fall. So we have time...
And we, we call that out in the restoration plan of only planting within a certain timeframe in the spring or fall. Because obviously, we're now in a moderate drought here in southeastern Mass. And so this would be a terrible time to plant anyways, so...
You don't have to make a decision on it tonight.
No, but I, I would like to see more than just the no-touch zone since he's wiped out the whole, a huge area of the buffer zone.
What exactly would you, what can we do with the buffer zone? The trees are removed completely or just lying there?
Oh, yeah, there's dirt pushed around, there's piles of dirt. I don't know if dirt was brought in or if that was old dirt. I kind of wanted some of that addressed, so...
We can always, we can always issue another enforcement order for the buffer zone.
Yeah, but it sounds like they're gonna be cooperative.
I mean, they're not gonna plant anymore, nothing back in the buffer zone. Clear those piles and let nature go back to itself.
Yeah, you, you can require whatever you want. Without, we don't have to give another enforcement order. I think they're willing to comply.
We were just most concerned with the 25-foot because that's the no-disturb zone and at least get that planted right away, but...
You said you haven't been up there. I mean, this whole area has been, I, I would like to see much more of it shown to be rehabbed than just the 25-no-touch zone.
Yeah, total clearing within the 100-foot buffer zone is 7,071 square feet, so...
I mean, we can get...
There's even clearing outside the buffer zone, but... You've got a riverfront there, too.
Yeah, on the back side.
And the front.
Okay, and that's, and that's 200 feet.
That's a river.
You know, this was just randomly, conservation was disregarded completely.
What's your pleasure, gentlemen?
Well, I'd like to see much more of it shown to be rehabbed than, than just the 25-foot. That those piles to be removed are...
Because the state of operation, the operation of the buffer zone, we still have that.
Absolutely.
Jurisdiction.
Yep.
I mean, that would be the sensible thing to do. Because if he thinks that this is the only thing that he's gonna do, it's just not gonna happen. I mean, it's not your problem, but nobody's.
Yep, absolutely.
So that's our message, to go back, tell him that we want the, the whole area rehabbed, a plan to rehab it before we give permission.
The full 100? All disturbed areas within the full 100 is called buffer zone? Just so we're clear.
Yeah, and the 200, but it overlaps, so yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Thanks, guys.
You can keep that if you want.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good weekend. Thank you.
You here for this one?
I don't know, do we have to make a motion that...
Next item is Bob Brimmer, 2050 Horton Street. You're coming up. He's not here, there's no update on that, so we'll just talk about that at the next meeting.
Yeah, I know, this is Brimmer?
Yeah.
Yeah, we skipped right over that. We skipped right over that, I'm sorry about that.
578 Hart Street.
You've only got one, one more person to deal with. Why don't we deal with that?
Yeah, well, I just have one sentence and then he's up. 578 Hart Street. I have the ASBIL, I have the Certificate of Compliance request, but I don't have the letter. Still waiting on the letter, that's it.
I guess if I'm gonna ask a question about that, I gotta go over there. Excuse myself.
But, okay.
Oh, I can't go that way.
Watch out, because this is not screwed in all the way.
I know.
Okay.
I was doing this yesterday.
That's right.
I, I wanna know about an ASBILT. I don't know what an ASBILT is.
A what?
An ASBILT.
ASBILT plan?
ASBILT. I don't know what it is. I want somebody to explain it to me. Jim?
Well, now they don't have a court, but they don't have to make a decision anyway, so...
No. Jim?
Yes?
What's an ASBILT?
A plan that shows what has been completed.
How is that associated with a conservation commission?
Lisa, do you...
We approve plans that are ASBILTS.
Huh?
If the plan is built and we approve it, we approve plans all the time.
As, as it was built, is the plan properly built as approved?
Right. So what happens is, at the end of the order of, at the end of the project, the engineer on record that submitted the plan is required to submit an ASBILT plan to us with a Certificate of Compliance request form. There's an ASBILT...
I've never, uh, in, in all the years that we've been doing these wood projects, I've never heard of an ASBILT plan.
But you haven't been paying attention.
Course I have.
Deal with that every, every commission, almost every meeting.
Every commission, is everybody who's sent us an ASBILT plan?
They give it yes. We approve a plan as it's built.
Yeah.
If they build a plan...
If they don't approve of the plan, then it has to be revised.
Well, I've never heard the phrase "ASBILT" and associated with all our plans that we've ever read, uh... So I was confused a little bit, and I didn't know what a, oh, I didn't know what was required.
Forty-plus years you've been under commission, you've never heard that term?
Never heard "ASBILT" associated with an order of conditions?
Is the plan built the way it was supposed to have been built? That's what it comes down to.
It's more associated with a certificate of compliance. So when they want a certificate of compliance, they have to show you an ASBILT, and they have to send a letter, and the engineer has to send a letter that says, yes, this was built as you...
Every certificate of compliance that we've ever dealt with, that ASBILT...
Has to, page two.
Oh, I, I, certificate of compliance, we've been issuing them for fifty years, but I've never heard
The expression.
"ASBILT" associated with a certificate of compliance.
Well, we, what, what happens is we just look at it and don't use the expression.
Certificate of compliance.
An ASBILT?
ASBILT plan.
Yeah.
Every, every certificate of compliance we've issued has an ASBILT plan attached with it.
Okay, so we're waiting on that, right, Lisa, the, uh, the letter?
Good luck.
So we're just waiting on the letter. Um, anyways... It's already, he has his Certificate of Occupancy, is what I'm told, so...
I, I couldn't hear you, Lisa.
The Duarts have their Certificate of Occupancy.
Oh, okay.
So that's where they're at, and we're just trying to close, clean up and close out. But John is here for fifteen sixty-six seater. He's, he's a guest appearance. It's a guest appearance.
He's here for what?
Fifteen sixty-six seater.
Fifteen sixty-six seater?
Underneath the, uh, Hart Street.
Restoration plan, so I haven't seen any of this stuff. This is on new.
John, is it?
It is.
U R D, capital S guy?
Yep.
Good.
Well, then that's at the end.
Thank you.
S or a Z?
S. From the islands.
Trade up.
No. All the island people have S's. All the mainlanders have Z's.
Oh, no, I know a lot of island people that have Z's more than S's.
That's 'cause they immigrated over. We, we normally don't allow it.
Oh, boy.
Oh, yeah.
So if you wanna just give us a quick rundown of what this says, and then we'll read it before the next meeting, have that.
Yeah, so, uh, what I put together is, uh, just a, a brief outline of what has transpired on the property since nineteen eighty-nine. When, uh, the barn that's out there used to be the main house, and the shed was still in the middle of the lot. Then they built a new house and converted the old house into a, a barn. And then they actually made a, uh, a riding ring, some, uh, added pastures back in, uh, two thousand and, uh, seven. Um, so that property's been under constant, uh, hard construction for a very long time. Um, and my client that purchased it, uh, he was made aware that it originally had a, uh, a riding ring and some pastures located almost at the same spot where he had, uh, put it. Also, uh, he owns, uh, a total of five point two-one acres. So, uh, he's in the process of putting the, uh, his lots into chapter sixty-one A under the, uh, the Farmers Act and the ag- agricultural use. Uh, we are going to be also submitting a notice of intent um, that will, uh, outline, um, what we are going to be doing on the property. Uh, also, there's gonna be a cleanup of the, um, up on the northeast corner of the property. There's some, uh, trash and whatnot that was left out there that he is going to clean up. Um, so all that is gonna be, uh, mitigated. But right now, that's basically the packet. Uh, and just want you guys to kinda review what's, what has been going on since nineteen eighty-nine on the property.
So in, in, uh, previous conversations with the owner, he has told, I, Jim was present. He had talked, we met on site, and he had talked about, yes, it was previously done by the other owner, but he was willing to fix a lot of it.
Yeah, he's, he's still willing to, uh, to fix, uh, a lot of it as well, yeah.
Okay.
Uh, it, it's all gonna be presented through a, a notice, uh, 'cause he's going through the, uh, Farmers Act anyway, but he is, uh, willing to, uh, uh, do the fixing, help restore what some previous owners...
Okay, so you have a lot of photographs here of the property and as it was changed.
Yeah.
Now, you are gonna give us a narrative as to what you're going to do and how it's gonna be, okay?
Yep.
That's what we're gonna be waiting for.
When will we receive that, then?
Um, right now, we, uh, wrapping up a, a few things on it, so, uh, we should have that probably a week prior to the next meeting on the twenty-first.
Okay. So we, we require things two weeks before.
Well, then I'll, I'll light a, a fire under some, uh, chairs at the office.
The seventh. Yeah, that'll be good. All right.
All right?
Okay. All right, thank you.
I don't wanna hold you up from watching the Celtics game, you know.
No, no, that, they, uh...
I get a run home, too.
Last quarter is the only one you wanna watch, anyway.
It is, it really is. But not the, the last game.
Yeah, throwing the ball away.
Yeah.
Thank you for coming in and, uh, giving us that, and we'll watch for that other inf... That's gonna be an NOI you're gonna file on the, before, before the seventh.
Yes.
Just do me a favor, email me, because I'm in the field a lot, and I wanna make sure I'm there.
Trying to tell you, I don't need mine.
Oh.
All right.
Sound like a plan, Dan?
Thank you.
Have a nice night.
You, too.
Happy Father's Day weekend.
Yeah, that's right. I don't think we can discuss or vote about the offices of this commission unless we have all the commissioners with us. I'm a little disappointed. I was hoping it'd all be here.
I think one of them sent an email. You got an email from one of the commissioners?
I got, uh, from, uh, Jack Crawford. I got, let me see. I got a proxy vote from Jack Crawford. I, John Crawford, give Charlie Mello my proxy to vote for CONCOM chairman. I vote for James Digits. Somewhere on my cell phone, I have a text from Jim Souza.
I don't, I don't know procedure or, or what we should do, but I know we oughta do it right. Uh, i- if you have an election, you oughta have more than one candidate. I was gonna, I wanted to vote for Jim. I know he didn't want it, but, uh...
Jim Souza?
I know he, he didn't want it, but I thought if you had more than one candidate, uh, you got an election. Uh, this is like Trump.
We don't have more than one candidate, really. You know, Jim Souza works.
Yeah.
Doesn't show up a lot of times.
Right.
Jack Crawford doesn't wanna be.
Right.
I don't wanna be.
I don't wanna be.
Well, we have one guy left. He's right here. I make a motion that we change...
I, 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 can we do that legally?
Yes, we can.
These two guys not here?
Well, they, they...
Well, you got Ja-, you got Jack's vote. That's good.
I got Jack's vote.
Okay, good.
So there's three people, me, Jack, and you.
Okay.
And actually, I got one here from, uh, Jim Souza, if I can find it. I'm not that good with the phone, but it's here.
And what did Jim Souza say? You can just say...
I make a motion that we reorganize, and Jim Digits will be our, uh, chairman.
He has to accept it. He looks like he's ready to run away.
I'll accept.
Okay. Now what do we do?
Just vote.
And I can vote, too.
Yeah.
Presidential candidate votes for himself?
That's right. I thought of that after I talked with Lisa this afternoon.
I know.
You will run for Congress, and they vote for themselves.
Yeah, but you gotta get it. You gotta make sure we get it in the meeting, in the minutes properly.
She's here. She's taping it.
Yeah.
So he'll be, he'll have it, right?
Okay.
Well, I made a motion.
I'll second it.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, aye.
Jack says aye. He's, he's voted.
But that, so that's chairman, then what are you gonna do? Vice chairman?
What?
You still get that today.
What'd you say, Lisa?
Is it yours now? Did we just change over in the, in the middle of the show?
I'll stay, I'm gonna, I'm not gonna jump seats. I'm gonna, I'll just finish over.
No, I'm saying, so he's chairman going forward. Charlie's still gonna be clerk, correct? You're gonna stay clerk. Reorganization, you just have to, you're gonna be clerk.
Well, yeah, if I were, you vote me.
Yeah.
Somebody wants it? Okay.
And then we still need some associate members.
Somebody's gotta vote for them.
We don't have any associate members.
We need them.
We need them.
We sure do. And, and you, you gotta be a little careful about chasing them away. That's all we gotta do. Fine, we're good. Charlie's still clerk?
Somebody's gotta make a motion to make me clerk, 'cause...
I'll make a motion that Charlie remain as clerk for the commission.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Oh, that's so good. Oh, no, wait, Charlie.
Um...
We're reorganized. About time.
Three amigos. Ready?
Okay.
Let me get a photo of this opportunity. Anybody wanna smile? Charlie looks so serious.
Okay, we have, uh, Brimmer on Horton Street, enforcement order. How's that going, Lisa?
Oh, yeah.
Update?
No, um, well, I think I already brought it up, but I, I don't have anything new on that one.
Okay, then we're gonna move on, then.
Yeah.
Uh, county street enforcement order.
Yeah. So I just pulled up the emails. I've been emailing Jauay from DEP Weekly. She doesn't, she hasn't spoken with Mr. Mitchell, um, but I do know for a fact that Ms. Do-, Mrs. Dulot, Goulart has spoken with Mr. Mitchell. And apparently, the, um, owner is out of the country. So we're waiting for DEP to have a little teeth. She said she was drafting...
This is twenty-three seventy-one?
Yes, it is.
And that's attorney Mitchell.
I am currently preparing documents for the case at two-three-seven-one County Street. I haven't heard back from the attorney. Is there an update? Thanks, Jauay Wang, Environmental Engineer, Wetlands and Waterways Program, DEP. So that's where that's at, and I'm gonna keep checking in with her. That was two weeks ago. Uh, actually, it was nine days ago. I checked in with her this week. She doesn't have an update either. She's preparing documents, and it's a state, it's a state agency, so...
How about that site visit we did yesterday, or day before?
Oh, yeah. So we went out to two-three-nine-three, was it, Bill?
Twenty-three ninety-three.
Okay. The, the neighboring, the neighbor allowed us on, the neighbor to the south. And he had some yard waste and some various debris, which I think we could write him a simple letter and ask him to clean that up, or at least clean up the debris, like, you know, everything but the organic material. There was some fence, uh, fencing or windows.
There was one window in there. An old discarded window, a wooden window with, it still had some glass in it. Everything else was, what he told me was, uh, when a tree fell down, he cut it up and left it there.
This is up at the top of the bank. It wasn't down below, so, you know, I'm, if stormwater is making their own decision on these properties, but I, I'm good with that one just being a simple letter. We visited your, you know, the chairman and I visited your property on the fifteenth, and we feel that...
Could you go ahead and just send that letter out, then, and, uh...
Yeah.
I think we can do that without, uh, official voting, just send a letter. And then, then if no action is taken, then we will take action.
Okay. Sounds good.
Okay, um, William Street, ten thirty-five?
I don't have an update, just that he was going to retain out back.
Twenty-forty County Street?
Uh, we do have an update. Um, the plan's being preva- prepared by Mark Rodriks. Um, he's gonna be submitting an NOI by, um, July seventh. Our next meeting's gonna be much longer than this meeting. Uh, so we're waiting on that. That should definitely be coming in.
Do you have a name for twenty-forty County Street?
Is that DeRosa?
No, Rodriguez. The old sawmill, Rodriguez.
Okay, next, next door, is it? Okay.
They pulled that tractor out of the swamp.
Yeah.
It's been flagged. He staked the twenty-five foot no-touch, and so we're making progress. I agree with the flagging that's out there. I had to move a couple, but I agree with the flagging, so...
Okay, so we're, you're getting, we're getting somewhere on that?
We are.
Okay.
Wellington Street, Jim?
Right, so this one, seventeen sixty-three Wellington Street. Uh, the owner has kept me apprised with weekly updates, um, being provided to us. So she hired Stephen Schmeele and Lighthouse Engineering, and, um, it's coming along. They, it's been flagged. So now we're just waiting for Lighthouse to finish their survey and put the limited disturbances on the plan for us so we can come up with some mitigation, yeah.
Uh, Oak Street, ten thirty?
I don't have an update for them.
Okay, eighteen sixty-one Somerset Avenue?
Yeah, so this one is, um, it's an odd-shaped lot, and, um, basically, the owners have agreed and have been in touch with Lighthouse. I've spoken with them. Um, and they want me to come to the site, but I told them I want the wetlands flagged. They stopped work in the back, and they were gonna try to regrade. They had a... They stopped work in the back, and they were gonna try to regrade, they had a pile of lawn there, they had a pile of dirt, uh, pile of rocks.
Can you give me, uh, uh, location, or lo-, rather than the number?
Yeah, the house is just north of the entrance to the railroad right of way, behind Alice's.
Okay, all right.
So, basically, um, that's an odd-shaped lot. They're, it looks like their neighbors doing this work, but it's actually them, 'cause their lot-
Okay.
Is like, um, an L shape.
Okay.
Um, an upside-down L, and... Yeah, so they're, they're willing to comply, but they still wanna do some work on their property, so they're gonna have some work to do with Lighthouse, um, that's where that's at.
So, but they do have, like, they do have someone?
Yeah.
Okay.
They retain them.
Okay, yeah, we have-
Guys, I know, I, I'm gonna confirm, they did reach out to them, I do know that, um...
Uh, Clearway?
So we're getting, uh, weekly inspection, site inspection reports from, um, let's see, Jason Ringler over, I think you guys have copies, I put them on the desk there, um... They have not started any of the restoration yet, and that's good, we don't, they're waiting for plant material, but we really don't want them to plant right now, anyway, um, they're gonna plant, they're gonna, they are gonna stabilize, and they're gonna continue to put the erosion controls in. To the best of my knowledge, the erosion controls are in, but they haven't had it inspected by us yet. But they're willing to at least seed this area, hydroseed these areas, and then do the planting in the fall, so... You have the report, and I can continue to forward you the weekly reports if you want, um... The DEP sign is visible from the street, you can see that. If you drive by, it's right after the Avujo's house, right down the driveway a little bit, you can see it, um... So that's it on that one.
Okay. Zero Williams?
Yeah, so that's a new one, and I expected the, um, property owner to be here, but she's not. Um, I sent a letter on June second, and she responded right away. She was really, um, concerned, because she didn't know that her contractor had gone into the area. They were again looking at the online mapping, which is, as everybody knows, not accurate. So, I told them they've done some damage in the wetland, and they need to have it flagged, and then, um, come up with a restoration plan for it. So, I'm a little surprised she wasn't here tonight, um, I'll follow up with an email tomorrow.
Okay.
But, um, she told me that she's, she's working with Proline, anyway.
Well, you know, it's good that, uh, all these people are getting their botanist slash engineers, um, because they're, they're going to be, you know, setting them straight and getting it done. Okay, Horton Street?
Okay, so that's another one, um, the letter went out on June sixth. I gave them ten days to respond, um, well, I said I wanted, um, actually, it didn't go out exactly that day, it was, I think it was mailed the, the day after, but I gave them till the seventeenth, so they have until tomorrow, um... It's a new violation. The problem with that site, I think we're gonna have, is that they don't own it, the bank owns it.
Who owns it?
The bank.
The bank.
Okay, so, then what we, what's gonna happen is when they get the letter, the bank will get a copy of the letter. Or-
Well-
Or the bank will, uh, be notified of the violation on their property?
I don't think we can do that.
No, only if there's an enforcement order, so maybe we just need to write an enforcement order.
We can't do that.
Why not?
Because we can't, it's in the Wetland Act. The Wetland Act regulations.
Yeah.
The big book I have said that you can't notify banks.
But if they own the property, and someone's doing damage on their property, yes.
Okay, so I said-
By the damages being done, but no violation against them.
Okay, I-
No, no, I'm not saying, just to notify them that, uh-
I sent the letter to the, to the people that live there, reside there. I got their information from the assessor's office. I can send a copy of that letter to the, to the owner, which is the bank. Okay?
Yeah, if they don't own it, they don't give a damn.
Yeah, that's why I'm saying, send it to the owner.
I thought you was gonna send the violation letter to the owner, I said, what the hell?
What bank is it?
Although the owner is responsible, but-
I don't have it, oh, yes, it's a-
I wonder if it's a mechanics bank?
It's not, it's, I don't know if it's a local one.
'Cause the president, the mechanic bank is, he's got an order of conditions on his lot.
Well, he's coming along, that, that's, he'll be-
Yeah.
No, I don't have it.
Okay, that's okay.
I get it.
A bank is a bank is a bank.
Yeah.
Yeah, he should be, he should be, uh, uh, in construction pretty soon, if, I hope so, for his sake.
Okay, that makes sense.
Okay.
Charlie, since we got a new regime now-
We got a new regime.
Very much like, at the start of all our meetings, to do a pledge allegiance to the flag.
That's, that's-
But it has to be on the agenda.
Oh, well, we, this is, with the time to do it, it's at the very end.
We can bring it up, it doesn't have to be an agenda, we can do it-
No, 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 I'm saying, it's at the end, we have public input now, we can, we can do this.
That was the whole public input we need.
Um... That's, that's, that's fine, yes.
Good, that's what we should do.
Good plan.
Well, you want a motion on that?
I just put it on the agenda, every time, every, first on the agenda.
Next week, we can do it now.
We, we, we could, we could act on it now.
Okay, I'll make a motion that in the future, at the beginning of all our meetings, we do a pledge allegiance to the flag.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Good.
We gotta add that to the agenda.
Well, I don't think that really has to be, uh, uh, this is, I think, most boards do this. I know CPC does it automatically, the Selectmen do it automatically.
Everybody does it automatically with us, I noticed that on-
Yeah. Yeah.
I'm patriotic as a Nixon.
Okay, uh, is there anything else? Anything for the public?
I'll make a motion we adjourn.
Wow.
Eight forty.
Eight forty.
Look at that, you're gonna get the season-
Second, you're gonna second it?
Second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Passed.